So we received bids on the project back in December. The bids came in at, with all the alternates, 24,617,240. Our budget, I mean, we were within $111,000 of our budget that was done when the design documents were at 40 basic percent. So bids came in right where we thought they were going to. Higher than what all of us wanted, but it's what the current market is. We didn't get, while we're proud that we did hit the budget, there were a handful of packages that we weren't proud of and we got single bids on. Having said that, we interviewed, we had two and three in those packages that were looking at it and decided to bail at the last minute, which again is a sign of the market, people are busy. But we did interview the other potential bidders. The numbers are where they need to be. So basically, I think the board has a few choices here. They can accept the bids, y'all can reject the bids, or, you know, your bids are good till February 10th. We do have, we have had over the years, many instances where we try to get bidders to hold the numbers for longer, which is, we typically can do. Occasionally, you know, we may have a steel increase or something there, but you're rolling the dice a little bit if you do that. But again, we're here to do what the board wants to do.
I have a question. Like typical inflation, we don't typically see costs go down once it goes up.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing this a long time. And, you know, you might get a slight correction, but we're seeing things continue to climb.
Yeah, so basically, there's not going to be time to wait and say, oh, we'll wait until it's down 10%. It's not going to happen.
I do not recommend you wait in anticipation of prices going down. I do not recommend that.
Well, I mean, I sort of want to talk a little bit about the LPC process. I know Mr. Merrifield spoke up about it, and so did Ms. Vickery. And that community, that committee was made up of members that represented every corner of our county. Every corner. And three quarters of that committee approved and recommended the community campus to this board. The Nelson County Board of Education, like Ms. Greading said, approved that to a four to one vote in December of 2021. And all of last year, every step along the way, every process that was made on the community campus design, the BG1s, the approvals to get bids, the approvals to work with the facility teams, was voted to five to zero in approval for that. So why would we even bring up, like, to me, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve these bids, that we start these contracts. Our community has been waiting long enough. My school, right now, Boston School, has classes, classes, in our cafeteria, in our lounge, in our foyer. My administrators, Ms. Amshoff and Ms., and our principal, Ms. King, do not have offices. When I go down there to spend a few hours, we talk in the hallway, we grab a classroom somewhere where the kids aren't as loud. I'm sure Mr. Bradley sees the same thing when he goes there. We have zero space. And I'm not talking about class for 20 minutes or one class. If there's not cafeteria food going on in there, there are students learning. And the beauty of that school, the fact that they can take any space, you talk about flexible space, we're using it, and it's not meant to be. But we got a genius group of professionals dedicated to their job of doing what's best for students in this county. And I refuse to continue to make them wait. This plan has been going on for two years, and they've been nothing but excited about it. And they were energized from the moment that I presented it to them before we even approved it on this board. I went down there and I said, what do we need to do? What is this going to do? What's this going to look like? How is it going to work? And they said, go do it, Tracy, get it done. And that's what I'm here to do. I'm ready to make a motion on this to get it passed. I make a motion. Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt you.
I was finished. I'm here to answer questions and be interrupted.
And sorry, I'm going to go on just a little bit more. I know it's late, and I am so sorry, but I want to show how much appreciation. The fact that you guys are here and that you spoke up for the students of Nelson County, I am so grateful. Mr. Mattingly said it right. I am excited that you guys are here to speak up for the students. And you talk about legacy. These kids talk about community and legacy. I'm going to go back a little bit to last, to a December meeting when Ask Me, or not Ask Me, but Ms. Jeff Dickerson from New Haven, that was his last meeting. And she said, what's your legacy going to be? If anybody on this board is up here with a legacy, then there are reasons. The fact that I'm doing what I need to do to get the job done for the students in this county, that's where my legacy is, with my children, my own personal children. That I'm not making any backroom deals at no local coffee shop to make a plan, that's my plan. This is the plan for students in this county.
So I took notes, and I don't think Mr. Filiato is still here. I lost count, like I think he did. But I'm curious, is Ms. Hoag still here, Jessica? Are you still here? I see a hand back there. So I'm going to come back to something you said here in just a moment. I'm going to come back to something that Ms. Hoag said in just a moment. So, and I'm going to connect this back to Ms. Dye. Yes, Ms. Dye, I'm going to pull you into this. So in 2015, I believe it was, the board at that time, and I was a member of it, was sitting at central office, and we were talking about challenges that our students were facing. And the discussion, it was just discussion, and the discussion eventually turned into, if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep ending up getting the same results. And I know that sometimes we use the phrase of kicking the can down the road, you know, let's let it be someone else's problem because we're not willing to do something bold and something that is the right thing to do. Often, we attempt to do the easy things, the things that just make it easy on ourselves. And I remember Ms. Dye in Nelson County High School cafeteria stood up and voiced her concerns about something that was just a, let's throw an idea on the wall with a bunch of other ideas and see which ones stick and which ones we ought to investigate further. Of course, at the time, it was me having made a simple comment of, you know, have we ever thought about how our K-8 schools are structured, especially our middle schools? And now I'm going to connect it to what the science teacher from Boston said, you're the only, or social studies, I'm sorry, you're the only social studies teacher that those middle school students have, correct?
Oh, and that's our only science teacher sitting next to him.
Okay, and the only science teacher. And if Ms. Kugel from New Haven was in here, I would say she is the only science teacher at New Haven. And as someone who was a middle school teacher at the beginning of my 30-year education career, I know that is not right. We're failing you because you do not have anybody else that you can lean upon at those two middle schools. And also, those students, we're failing them because they've got very limited options. And so that led to that just casual comment of mine back in 2015, where I said, if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep getting the same results. We keep admiring the issues that we all recognize, but we keep admiring them. We keep just looking at them. We keep pointing them out, and then we keep saying, okay, well, let's go on to the next issue. And so, Ms. Dye, you were very vocal that day in the Nelson County High School cafeteria. Fast forward, 2016, you ran for, and Mr. Pate, who was the board representative from the Boston area, decided he was done, he was ready to retire to Florida. So you decided to run. And something I heard you say as you were a member of the LPC in the fall of '21 was, you know, now that I look back on that, maybe that was something we should have looked at a little bit closer. Now, paraphrase you, those weren't your exact words, but I think that's what you were getting at. And now we fast forward to Ms. Hoag tonight. And this isn't an exact quote, but I wrote, these were my notes of what I listened to you say. "Accolades for West, to identify inequities, to make the change." And then I did put a quote. He took the lead for two years. And I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we all don't like change. I mean, you know, ask my wife, she wants to move a piece of furniture in the house, I freak out about it. None of us get comfortable with that because we're comfortable with what we know. But as Ms. Bowling has said, as more than 40 people have said tonight, in fact, the majority of those emails not only say, please do not merge the two high schools, but they also say, the more I have thought about this community campus model, while I may not understand it all, it sounds like the right thing to do. And the majority of those blue handwritten notes say the same thing, whether it was from the students, whether it was from some teachers, whether it's been parents and their students who point blank told me in person, face to face, they came here from Jefferson County because they wanted to be at Thomas Nelson High School. So that tells me there is something that is being done right with that vision of over 15 years ago, of having two high schools that have very personalized experience for all of our students. I'm lucky. My story is, I have a almost 26-year-old that went through the Bloomfield Schools, Nelson County High School, great experience. I've got an 18-year-old, same story, he just graduated this past spring. I'm lucky enough that I have what I will call my adopted daughter, my son's girlfriend, who went to Thomas Nelson High School and graduated this past spring. And I see what Thomas Nelson did for her. She became salutatorian of her class. And part of that is because of that very personalized experience that Mr. Merrifield and the staff there ended up providing to her, as they also provide to a lot of other students. So as my coworkers say, I've got a lot of words, and I just used them. And it may have been hard to follow my connections, but I will also echo what Ms. Bowling has said. Since April of 2021, there have been public conversations, community roundtables, many of them. I also attended almost every community roundtable. I think I missed the first one at Boston because I was out of town, and I missed one other. The LPC meetings, there were many LPC meetings in the fall of '21. I can start working on that. And I think we heard her say tonight, I can start working on that. And I think we heard her say tonight, she believes, a very skilled educator and administrator believes, based on her experiences, that the community campus is going to be best not only for all students, but for her students, her kids, her three daughters that don't even live in this county that she... So whenever we say that there's not been a lot of discussion, I call bunk. April '21, many community roundtables. Fall of '21, many LPC meetings. Last year, Ms. Bowling said it well, almost every single public school board meeting had some discussions around the district facilities plan, some discussions about schematics, design, questions were asked. I know Ms. Berry has had concerns, as we all have, about safety of students. What we see today is very different than what the original design would have been. We see that there are separations. And in fact, I have to say, and I apologize, because I am going along here, Ms. Bowling, I am appalled, as a community, how we have talked about our high school students and the terror that they will be in a community campus. And that is what has been said. In the Commonwealth of Kentucky, there were 171 public school districts. There are only 120 counties. That means there are 120 county school systems like ourselves, like Washington County, like Bullock County. That means there are 51 independent school systems. School systems like Bergen Independent, Bardstown City Schools, Paris City Schools, Fort Thomas Independent, Science Hill Independent. 51 schools, that's almost a third of the public school districts in Kentucky. And the majority of those public school districts that are independents have some variation of a campus model. It may be that they are only a K-8 school, Science Hill Independent, literally, it's just a K-8 school district. Whenever they go to high school, they have to go to a different district for high school. We've also got many school districts that have on the same campus, an elementary, and then a middle and a high school. I also know of a school district that is K-12 in a two-story building. K-12, one building, two stories. And I'll reiterate, I am appalled that we as a community, or part of us as a community, would say, our youth are worse than the youth in those other 51 districts, plus the other county districts that have some sort of campus model. Ms. Bowling?
One more thing. I feel like I'm sort of preaching to the choir here, because overwhelmingly, the report, the emails that we have received, and by God, these students that spoke tonight, the ones that emailed, spoke volumes. Do we want these kids to know that their community supports them? Do we want them to look back on their education and say, where am I going to build my family? Where am I going to build my home? What community, did I get community support? Because if you don't think that those kids that stood up here are going to remember that and remember this, then you're dead wrong. And if you own a business in this town, where are you going to get your workers? Because the people that are leaving a legacy right now are the people in that building. And the second group of people that are leaving a legacy in this town, and in this county, and in our Bardstown City, is the community partners that people like Laura Arnold has gotten together because they are making those people, and our students, feel like they're at home. And if we as a community can't overlook our ability to, whether it's a tax issue, or it's, I'm going to have to ride a bus for 10 more minutes, or my kid's going to be on the bus for 15 minutes, if you can't look past that for what's best for the students, being spoke by the educators, like, what are we going to do? Just put more obstacles in their way and make it more difficult for them to do their job, and still ask them to better perform? Can you do more, but I'm going to tie your hands behind your back?
Ms. Bowling?
Sorry.
You said ride 10 more minutes?
Take some courage. Sorry.
You said ride the bus for 10 more minutes?
Yeah.
I'm also concerned about the mom that stopped me at Bardstown Burger over Christmas vacation and said, it's about time that you all talked about this community campus because I am tired that both of my kids, they're both graduated from Thomas Nelson now, I am tired that both of my kids had to ride a bus all the way from Cox's Creek across the county. And to what you were just saying, so you students from Thomas Nelson, and there were also a few from Nelson County High School. The past week, that's their emails that said, we don't want a merged high school. And some of them even said that community campus model, it kind of sounded like a good idea, but they don't know enough about it. And then, right here, are the ones over the past week that said, please merge the high schools. Tell me which ones are the loudest voices that for the past 20 months have been extremely Ms. Bowling, I think, Ms. Bowling, I think I heard you say that you made a motion to approve the Thomas Nelson Community Campus bids, as well as the associated BG forms?
Absolutely.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve.
You know, the, what we're mostly forgetting about is taxpayers and the voters of Nelson County. I don't know, but that's what I ran on, huge, huge slap in the face to the voters to do that. So that's my opinion.
I'd also like to, to talk about that. I've been going to meetings for 20 months, and this is a very impressive turnout, and these kids were so articulate, and all the parents, and I mean, there's clearly love for this school. So this is, whether or not Thomas Nelson remains a high school or is unified, isn't what I'm talking about. The community campus has been discussed for 20 months. And I know some of you all, a lot of you all have been to meetings before, but probably most of you have not been to a meeting. But if you've been to any meeting over the last 20 months, there's been just as many passionate people talking about the fact that they do not want middle school merged with high school. It's true. It's true. It's true. In an election, in an election, I've not been hiding the ball, guys, I've not been hiding the ball. I've said from the beginning, if you want, I mean, if you want business as usual, don't vote for me. I mean, I've said it, I've never been a proponent of the community campus. That has nothing to do, that may not even have anything to do with whether Thomas Nelson continues as a school or not. But simply, if the motion here is about the community campus, in terms of the middle school with high school, my opinion hadn't changed, so.
I would also add that I've never seen this turnout at any of the community roundtables
But they did turn out in the vote. Election this year, they did turn out, so take that in mind.
So Ms. Berry? Ms. Berry, there's been a motion, there's been a motion and a second, Ms. Berry.
I have a motion on the floor, was made by Ms. Bowling, second, Mr. Jackie, that we...
And I would also ask that whenever you call for a vote, that it's a voice vote.
To accept the bid and to build a community campus at Thomas Nelson High School. Okay, I'm going to start over here on my right, Mr. Norman?
Hello?
Mr. Jackie?
Yes.
Oh my God. Ms. Bowling?
Hi.
I forgot your name almost. Okay, and Ms. Deaton?
I vote no.
Uh, Ms. Berry?
No.
Excuse me, excuse me. The vote is 3-2, again. And I said months ago, months ago, that, months ago, I was the one that voted no. There are other ways that we need to work on this other than this, and spending that kind of money on something that you could spend that $25 million on differently.
So I will pose the question then, because you did, it was a 4-1 vote for the LPC's recommendation, we spent the entire last year at every meeting, and it was always a 5-0 vote. So what I'm hearing is that the time that was spent by the architects, the design team, and us as a board was a waste, even though it was supported 5-0 throughout the entire calendar year last year?
Well, the voters of Nelson County had a choice, and that's what we done.
The question was more towards Ms. Berry, I'm sorry.
Well, you can point your, you know, your question at me, but I made no bones about it months ago, and I'm going to stand by what I voted for to begin with when it was a 4-1 vote. I have a problem with security. I don't want my sixth grader, if I had a sixth grader, in with the 12th grader.
That's offensive.
No, that's my opinion.
You are trusting these people in this room, you're telling them.
And we voted on it, let's move on.
Excuse me.
Time to move on.
Excuse me. I'm just saying, I'm not going to vote any differently, I don't feel any differently than I did 20 months ago when we first took this vote, and I was the Lone Ranger. And I'm still going to be the Lone Ranger.
So we're going to listen to a quarter of our community, a quarter of our community, it's choosing for the entire county.
This is my choice, I'm one vote.
I'm not talking about...
I was one vote months ago, don't even go there with me. It's no differently than, I don't feel any differently than I did months ago. That's just my opinion, you know, that's just the way I feel. I'm not sorry for how I feel. I will not be sorry for how I feel.
Yeah, let's move on, please.
Because I want, I want, you know, what I want is nothing, I just don't want a sixth grader with a 12th grader. Now, whoa, wait a minute, excuse me, excuse me, it doesn't make any diff, excuse me, it doesn't...
It's bid voted on, let's, let's move on.
It doesn't make any difference where you put them in a building, they can find each Okay. Yes, sir, I am. Okay, our next, our next project will be the New Haven Revised BG1, BG2, BG3, Jeff Pickett, Pickett and Houshun, did I say that right? Pretty close.
So just to be clear, the New Haven Revised BG1, BG2, BG3, this allows the New Haven major renovation project to continue on. So tonight, we do get to acknowledge some of the potential costs of that project publicly, and allow the architect and team potentially to continue to move forward, knowing that these numbers could change, as well as the design. But this really allows the architects and engineers to continue on in a process over the course of the next few months, that allows the New Haven project to go to bid, just like we just went with the time.
But how can we go that to bid when that was supposed to be designed around a K, a P through five school? There's no reason to go move forward on that. If we're not designing the community campus, if the community campus is off the table, then why are we doing that? Now, I want to, I want to do something for New Haven, but we have to be cautious here, like, we can't leave New Haven and Nelson County High School without, like, to me, this is just a disaster. But here we are at this point.
But here we are at this point. New Haven needs something. Boston needs our building, like, our people taken care of here. What are we doing? Why are we moving on this if the community campus is dead? Is this not designed around the community campus and everything that had to do with the community campus?
To my knowledge, it wasn't. It was redesigned the school.
It was a P5.
So, the design that's presented today is a P5 school. To be clear, the board cannot act on this if it's not a P5 school currently, cannot spend money on it if it's not a P5 school. Just to be clear.
So, based on that, as Ms. Bowling said, I mean, there, there's no path forward to really have even any more real, true, and this, no, no offense to you, Mr. Pickett, but, I mean, we're at this point where we can't have conversations around New Haven and what New Haven has needed for decades that previous boards- that, that previous boards have also said, "Well, yeah, it's on the DFP, but we're not gonna do anything." So if we can't move forward as a P5 school, then we're, we're kind of at this crossroads here as a community. We're, we're at the crossroads that basically that LPC has been told, "I don't care about your all's expertise. I don't value your all's expertise as educators, as parents, as community members. And I don't want what the LPC said." That's, that's the crossroad we're at as a board, as a community.
And, just to be clear, in theory, the board can vote on this as a P5 independently of any of those conversations or it cannot, right? Same as just did the Thomas Nelson Campus. So, the current design is P5 and it's organized with that assumption in place. So we can present it or we can not present it at this point.
Ms. Berry, as chair, what would be the direction you would recommend we go?
Considering I did not know that it was only a P5 because I wasn't paying any attention.
So, Wes, to get it, if, if it is a P5-
That's what I'm saying.
And we have a, we have a P8 right now.
We have a P8 right now.
So the process to get it to there-
Yeah. Yeah.
It doesn't matter what it is right now. The DFP that the LPC, the District Facility Plan, that the local planning committee recommended, that they voted on, they discussed, they voted on, they recommended to the board, was it as a P5. It has been that way since December of 21.
Essentially, if the board chooses to take an action on it tonight, it is working from the belief that it's a P5 school. That does not mean it's so. In theory, over time, it could change into lots of different things, as you know, over time. But the assumption is, if the local planning committee made this a project and it was a P5 project, the intention is it's a P5 school.
Okay. One moment. We're gonna take the vote. What? Excuse me. One moment.
So, just to be clear, why we're here tonight to revising this document, we've already approved the BG1 for the New Haven P5 school. Okay, we've already approved that. This is an updated document that gives a true and more accurate cost of the project.
Guys, we're fine to, we're fine to move on this as a P5. If you're not, you're not fine to move on. Set support. I can't hear what she said. She said-
We'll move on. Did you say, say we move on? Move on to the-
My recommendation would be to vote on it tonight.
That's what I recommend. Can you speak up, John?
I'm trying to, but I'm also not trying to mislead anybody. I'm not trying to mislead anybody.
What did I tell you, buddy? Welcome to the party.
I'm gonna- Okay, for right now, I'm gonna make a motion to revisit this issue.
I just, just a couple of things. Couple, couple, couple points of clarification, just to, for the board that we publicly talk about. Um, this is a cost estimate, really, process that we're going through. Additionally, the, importantly-
Ms. Bradley, I'd say let's let Ms. Berry as chairperson bring up what she's getting ready to bring up.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to revisit this issue.
Which issue?
Which, which, this issue is the community campus issue.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Uh, there's a motion here to revisit the community campus. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. One moment.
Hold on, guys.
One moment.
I make a motion-
So, hold, Ms. Bowling, I'm sorry. If you can permit, so we can make sure, because I, I know that sometimes if, if you're not talking right into it here, it makes it hard to hear. So that you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Berry, you made the motion to revisit the concept of the community campus.
Yes, sir.
I second the motion. Ms. Berry then asked for a vote. There were ayes. Did you hear any noes?
This is the, this is revisiting the topic.
This is to revisit the topic of the community campus that was discussed just previous to this agenda item.
For the purpose of determining how New Haven fits in the community campus. Is that correct? Is that-
To, to revisit the community campus discussion because this discussion, Item 6B, hinges upon that much bigger concept of the District Facility Plan that the community campus is a key part of.
Okay. To the extent that it impacts New Haven, then yes, I would be in favor of that, yes.
Yes. Because as I, as I hear it now, New Haven cannot, we cannot progress, make any progress with New Haven until this item is voted on because it's a P5 instead of a P8.
The District Facility Plan identifies the New Haven school as a P5-
P5 and not a P8.
With the, with the bigger picture of the community campus, what Boston becomes, as well as the Bloomfield schools. And so, Ms. Berry, again, made a motion to revisit that previous agenda item. It was a second. There were votes. Did you get a majority vote, Ms. Berry?
On that, on this, yes, I did get a majority of the, of a yes on this item. Okay? And I'm gonna say this. This is the only reason, the only reason I see it differently, and really, there's no choice, is because of New Haven being a P5, being mentioned as a P5 instead of a P8. Do you all understand that one? Cause I am not for, per se, putting, I'm sorry, putting sixth graders in with 12th graders. But this has got us over a bear. It's got me not feeling good, but that's just me, okay? That's just the way I feel. So, all in favor? Excuse me. Just hold on. We're gonna vote on this.
What, Ms. Berry, you, you need to identify what the conversation is that we're revisiting.
We are revisiting voting on the community campus issue.
And by issue?
Six through 12.
And by issue, do you mean-
Six through 12 and putting a P5 at New Haven when we get to that part.
And, and by issue, do you mean the bid packages and the BGs?
Yes, the BGs and the PQRs and the whole works, okay? So, I'm gonna start again over here with Mr. Norman.
This, this is a community campus?
No.
I, I believe before there's any vote, there should be a motion to revisit and to vote again-
I make a motion.
On the bid packages and the BG documents that are part of Item 6A.
I make a motion to postpone this discussion until next time so we can really see what we're doing. I mean, I'm shooting from the hip here. I don't, this, I would, I would make a motion to postpone this until the next board meeting so that we really know what we're doing. I think it's pretty clear we don't.
There's, there's a motion on the floor.
Excuse me. Please. Please.
There's a motion on the floor. We have a motion to postpone. About that, that motion first.
Yes.
The board has said, "If we vote on, there's all votes that they have to rely on. And even if they have to stop, now we're again, we're also again."
Thank, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
So, Ms. Bowling?
There is a motion, wait a minute, there's a motion and a second on the floor to revisit the community campus. Got it?
Yes.
That was the correct motion, correct? Yes.
And there's a, if there's a motion to postpone-
Yeah, but you can't do it until after this motion's already on the floor, okay? So, there's a motion on the floor to revisit the community campus.
Voic, voice vote is requested.
And, and that's where we were going. And, yes, and Mr. Norman voted?
Oh, no.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. I voted to revisit the community campus.
Hey, you might wanna clear that up.
Huh?
Yeah, you might wanna clear that up.
Okay. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I voted to revisit the campus.
That's right.
To revisit it, okay? To revisit. Is that okay? I don't have to ask you people, is that okay? To revisit, okay? Now, we're gonna proceed from here, okay? Everybody keep their cool, okay? Now.
So, Ms. Berry, you're saying then we are back to the discussion of Item 6A, which is what is up on the large screen right now, correct?
Okay, I, I heard Ms. Deaton, though, wanted to make a motion too, though.
Okay.
See? Okay, Ms. Deaton?
My motion was, sorry, I don't know if this works. My motion was to postpone any discussion on that until we have time to look at the P5 implications from the community campus and come back next week with a little more information.
Next month.
Next month, I'm sorry. With a little more information. Yes.
Do, motion on the floor is to take, uh, time, uh, to, uh, wait on the, or let us look, or especially these two, look at the P5 discussion and the school. Okay, that's the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Mr. Norman has seconded.
Voic, voice vote requested.
Excuse me?
Voice vote requested.
Okay. Mr. Norman?
Uh.
Yeah. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Jackie?
No to postponing.
No to postponing.
No to postpone it.
No to-
Yes.
Yes, to postpone it? Oh, God, you all. Yes, I know. You're looking at me, I know. Uh, no, we're not gonna postpone this. Okay. Okay, people. Uh, the main reason being these bids will be postponed, I mean, these bids will be voided or un- February 1st. That's how this rolls.
Well, and, and-
That's just what I was informed by the lawyer.
Well, Ms. Berry, I would say it's even a much bigger conversation than that as what we were getting ready to start talking about, the work that is needed to be done at New Haven.
Uh, that's what I'm saying.
Which is identified right now in the DF, District Facility Plan as being a P5 school.
Yes.
And we cannot move forward with it until we make the much bigger community decision around this community, what's become known as the Community Campus Mall.
Okay. So I need to make, I make a motion that we take, that we do the community campus.
So, you'd be making a motion that we accept the bid recommendations and revised BG1 as presented?
What he said.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, Ms. Bowling, you're saying-
I make a motion that we accept the bid contracts.
So-
I have a motion.
The motion I hear is, as we are now revisiting 6A, to accept the contract bids and the BG1s that are associated with the Thomas Nelson Community Campus, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that motion again.
Okay. Motion made and second to accept the bid on a community campus at $24,800,000.
I'll, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Uh, yes, Mr. Norman?
No.
Mr. Jackie?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Bowley?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Deaton?
No.
And Ms. Berry? Yes. Okay, please, please. We'd like to get, people, people, we'd like to get through this meeting, really. Uh, please, you know, please.
It's 10 o'clock.
Okay.
6B.
Yep. Next, we have New Haven Revised BG1, BG2, and BG3. Go ahead, Mr. Pickett.
As, uh, Mr. Bradley, um-
Put it closer.
Hey, here.
Can you hear me now? There we go. Uh, as Superintendent Bradley was saying, uh, what we are bringing forward now is the, uh, BG2 document, which is the, uh, the outlined specifications for the project. The BG3, which is the estimate from our documents, and then the revised BG1 that, uh, represents that estimate. Uh, when we started the project, the BG1 was already established at $5 million, and as we've gotten into the project over the last year, uh, the, uh, the building infrastructure and the vision that has been set forth by the teachers and the principal and the table team, uh, we've gotten, we've arrived at a project that's, uh, right at $10.8 million for construction cost. And again, that was a result of just studying, uh, what the community needed, what the building needed, and, uh, it was more than the original BG1. So what we're really asking is for approval of that revised BG1 so that we can go to the next step with our engineers and our design team, uh, and move forward to a DD, Design Development, uh, approval in the next month, we hope. Uh, so again, it's just bringing us up to date. Go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
So, the, I think it's important, the timeline, you talked about the bids. In order to get the bids for the New Haven project, in order to start in 2024, 2025 school year, was, was that the, so can you talk a little bit about the timeline, just to make sense of that, how this progresses towards bids potentially over the next few months?
With lead times on equipment and materials, we have to bid the, the project in the late spring to early-
Development documents, BG2, I'm sorry, BG1, 2, and 3. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Um, I'll, uh, New Haven, right? Yeah, I wanna make a motion. I'm excited about this, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve BG1, 2, and 3, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Okay. Okey dokey.
I'm not sure if you guys wanna have this conversation or not. We've talked quite a bit about it. This is just really a vehicle to talk about high school, middle school organization. Um, based on current conversations, not sure if we wanna talk about this now or not, Dan. I'm just, I'm just asking if you wanna talk about it.
Board calendar, Superintendent Bradley.
Uh, while the future meeting, uh, between now and February 21st, the next scheduled meeting is February 21st, it is, uh, in order to move the bids forward on the Thomas Nelson project, it has to be bonded. And, uh, there would have to be some special called meeting before February 21st to do that, just being transparent about that, knowing that that would be a board decision to bond it, but in order to pay for the bids, it would have to be bonded.
Yes.
Excuse me?
I say that to say, February 21st is our current next scheduled board meeting. Obviously, any board meetings are given 24 hours notice at minimum. Uh, currently, there's no future meeting dates unless the board would like to set one now.
I don't know what my schedule is. I don't know what my calendar is. I got it at home. Uh, one moment. Uh, myself and Superintendent Bradley will get together on this one. I don't have a calendar in front of me, so, uh, we'll go that route, as long as we get this done before our next, preferably before our, well, have to be before February 21st. So, within maybe a couple of weeks, you and I can, um, do our thing. Okay? Okay, great. Next month, February 21st, and where is that meeting?
Meeting's in Nelson County High School.
Okay. Nelson County High School, it'll be February 21st at 5:30. Okay. Our next item is board celebration. Uh, is there anyone on the board that would like to give kudos to, or any kind of celebration?
I do. Of course I do, because this is my thing. I wanna thank, um, all of our guests again for coming and being here and being supportive, not just of our students, but of the teachers that are doing the work. Um, Ms. Holly Smith, I need you in my pocket at all times. Like, you are amazing, and I love your energy and the fact that you just grabbed that mic and you just took the floor. Um, and, and Dr. Ross, I'm sure he's already left, because he probably had an important place to be. But, I know exactly, like, he had a really great place to be. Um, but I love the fact that, that he was representing New Haven, and he was representing the side of town, and like he said, that people gave up on, and the fact that he was standing up there, talking about, you know, he had oncology patients that he needed to get to, and I think that speaks volumes to what this county is capable of doing for their students, if we just let the work get done. And I wanna thank Mr. Bradley for having the freaking courage to make sure that our schools do not get left behind. As a matter of fact, they're gonna be jumping forward ahead because we're doing the right thing as a board. And I thank you for that, for having courage, because these types of things, the 20 months that we have been having this conversation, took courage. Um, and then I wanna thank Ms. Conley for allowing me to go along, and I so wanna redo that again with, um, visiting some students with the work-based learning and Pat's Place. I don't know if you guys know that Pat's Place is downtown Barchtown. Amazing, we have students that are working there that are, um, the most important thing about that conversation was, I asked them, "How do you feel about working in this environment? Do you feel connected to your community?" And they said, "Being in that, that restaurant and getting to know the people that come in there every morning, they know these people by name. They know customers by name." And I think that speaks volumes for young people being able to connect with a past generation and be able to feel the bond that what community means. And I'm grateful that they have that opportunity to have that experience, but more importantly, that we have community partners that are opening up their doors to allow that to happen. So, I will end my long talk. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Berry, I've used my allotment of words for the night.
Have you?
I have.
Mr. Norman?
I have nothing to say.
Ms. Deaton?
Um, I'm just glad it's, uh, 9:57. So, thank you all very much.
I appreciate the conversation.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second to adjourn? Okay, motion, second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?